Well, my cabinet was moved, so I was saying bad things about people.
I'm guessing we'll have at least three city council members on Zoom tonight.
Oh, you think so? Test in the microphone, see if it's working.
If this uh virus continues to accelerate as it seems to be doing.
We go shutting down again?
We we could, no, I don't think we'll do that. I think we'll go, might go to Zoom only for a while. I don't know. And I hate to do that, especially because the eighteenth, we have swearing in and we had a lot going on, so.
You have a lot going on on the eighteenth, and then we have a joint P and Z city council, which I guess that would work well on Zoom. Because there's just one person presenting.
When is that?
I think it's February fifteenth. Because I just emailed Christiana today about she has an accelerated timeline for the Formula Business ordinance. And to act, to verify those dates and make sure when I have to publish things in the paper.
Yeah, right.
So I, because it's not our normal sequence, it's coming pushed, we're pushing some, some limits. So I wanted to clarify that I understood the dates correctly.
No, right, and they're pretty far out, so you really have to be on top of it. I saw that.
Yeah.
Um, on the first, I showed that we're gonna have, the BLCC is gonna be here with city council.
That was an email that you had sent that they would like to be on a quarterly schedule with us and. And um, it's just a note I put on that planner because I haven't heard anything else.
We'll have to double check with them.
Yeah. So I just put it there just so it's on your radar, that other planner is just for your radar. There's nothing officially on the schedule. I don't have no idea what you want to talk about. You said maybe we'd have to redo our agenda, um, you know, for that kind of meeting. You're the boss.
Yeah, not really.
You're like, ah. Okay, are we talking now? You're showing. Can I hear it? So, Mike, I see you on the mixer. Now we got that. How about the microphone? Oh, excellent. We are, oh my god, we got audio and visual. Kind of just makes me all happy inside when things work. Nice. Okay, I gotta go print some extra agenda items.
What's up?
Two thousand twenty-two is the number vibrational frequency of six, someone else community, healing, collaborative harmony. In case you were.
I was. I was awake half the night.
I thought you might be wondering, it's like, what does two thousand twenty-two mean? Should be great.
I don't have, unless I missed it, anything in here about the treasure.
Oh, we don't have, so I talked to Christiana because I'm not comfortable throwing people's personal information out there. And so the, the resume was sent to council separately in a separate email. It's not public information.
Okay.
And it's the only application we have. So as of date, we have one application. It has been shared with council and will hopefully.
So we will consider that site then, right?
I would hope they would consider that, yeah.
Yep.
But it's not part of the public packet because it's a personal employer.
Gotcha.
So I can get around that public records. I wouldn't want mine out there. They did though, when they did me, they just threw it out. Just don't let people do these days. And then I am. I kind of made a note of the treasures, what this person actually does. Do you want to copy what they do?
Um, well, sure.
You know, in your discussion?
Well, they don't actually do any of this.
No, they do this. They only do it like ten hours a year.
Oh, this is, this is the description for what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
For ten hours a year, it's not a bad thing. And I looked up about what the clerk should do, and we have it in our code deck. Whatever the clerk clerk shall do is then given to the deputies to do.
Oh, that's actually, that's actually a code, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know, do you want the clerk to do?
I do. Well, but that's where we need to put our heads together and decide what will that job description look like.
Okay, so I can, so I don't code, I put them state statutes.
Now, is this Allison, uh, familiar with, with this job description?
Yes, she's been working through Dawn.
Thank you. Excellent.
So yes, I'm going to speak statute, the clerk is responsible for like which requests, dealing with the elections. Those two things are state statute, but the other stuff, the permitting stuff isn't necessarily.
No, there's very little state statute. It's like the mayor.
Yeah, what do you do?
Not much.
You do it or they need you to do.
That's kind of it. I work, I work for everybody else. Um. It says the, the mayor, you know, shall be the CEO of the city and the keeper of the peace.
Wow.
Keeper of the peace, that's uh.
So Dawn started me riots, in other words.
I have to stop all the riots. That's, that's the catch.
My hair to get cautious. You can just use that shock factor.
I may um, bring my computer out because I'm, I have a hard time during the meetings of, you know, changing my focus.
Oh, I get that.
Up there, and I may go ahead and put my computer out here.
Just join it without audio.
Huh?
Just join the Zoom without audio.
Excellent. Okay, at six o'clock, and uh, we will call this regular city council meeting of January the fourth, twenty twenty-two, a brand new year to order. Roll call, please.
Council member Loretta.
Here.
Council member Hill.
Present.
Council member for Dancy.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Council member Gowing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Green.
Here.
Council member Thar.
Present.
Okay, fantastic. At this time, I would ask for the approval of the agenda. Anything we'd like to change on this agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
Gowing moves to approve the agenda.
Third of seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Next up, we have some housekeeping matters, but I, I want to start off the housekeeping with uh, this is going to be uh, council member Dowd's last official meeting as a city council member. Uh, and we have prepared the obligatory plaque. The slate plaque.
Oh, yay.
Jane, step out front here if you would, please. Jane Dowd, we have so many people committed to make a difference, and you have made a big difference. Really appreciate all that you do. This plaque is the mountain wall and uh.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Couldn't wait, can't wait to hang it up.
Yeah, it's meant to be done.
First of all, all right, thank you, Greg. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jane.
Uh, Max, you had some housekeeping matters you wanted to run by us?
Yeah, uh, one is for awareness and one that I would like to talk about just a, a little bit more in depth. The first of which is just in some, some work that I've been helping out the county when it comes to OHV rental companies in town and trying to figure out what to do about them. And it doesn't necessarily affect us as a city. Uh, however, it, I just want to bring it to an awareness that uh, the OHV rental companies on the east side are, are exercising their rights to be able to rent, run OHV legal, street legal vehicles uh, on the east side trails. And uh, is doing so and uh, and something that we'll probably be hearing about more in the future, both uh, from the county as our, as our municipal partner here in Lake County, but also in the paper and, and the likes of that. But uh, I, I don't have too much more to share except for uh, the east side is changing uh, and unknown if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Okay, thank you.
And the second is, I, I'd just like to hear, Mayor, if you could, about uh, what has been occurring with the snow removal in town. I have been receiving some, some emails from a few constituents and then also some of our, my uh, my neighbors here on, in Ward three B. And uh, and they would, they'd like to hear how the street department's doing and, and, and what they're working on and, and perhaps bring to the forefront uh, some of their concerns.
Okay, uh, I've been driving around town to check. I, I, I think they've been doing a stellar job. I mean, the streets have been fantastic. Uh, they've also been, most days they remove snow. They've run the blower twice on Harrison Avenue. Uh, you know, removing snow from Harrison Avenue using the blower. Uh, they're finding the blower doesn't work very well in icy piles. Uh, so they have to remove those with the loader, but they remove snow most days. They've done the, the half blocks on Harrison Avenue a couple times. Uh, because, you know, uh, part of the criticality of all this is, is to make sure that our merchants uh, have the ability to do business on a, on a daily basis and we clear Harrison as quickly as we possibly can. Uh, other than that, I've seen them, they cleared Knight Street, I think either yesterday or today. Uh, that, that block between Harrison and Poplar is always a, a problem where snow builds up. Uh, so they, they have been, at one point, they had worked eight straight days. Uh, and of course, I, I, I uh, make sure they understand, they have to adhere to DOT guidelines. Uh, they have to, they can't work more than sixty hours in a seven day period according to the DOT. So uh, there are restrictions on, on how much they could possibly do. I'll also say that we're, we're going to hire a seventh person. Uh, we have an applicant who uh, wants to come to work for us. Uh, he does not have a CDL, so we're gonna have to get him a CDL pretty quickly. Uh, but uh, that's, that's hopeful in terms of, of having a full crew instead of a partial crew.
Okay, uh, well, I'm, I, I'm, I'm certain that they've been working very hard and I'm uh, it's music to my ears that they're actually removing snow and not just moving snow, which is, it's a great step in the right direction. What, what I've heard from some of our constituents, both through email and walking the streets is, is that they'd like to, they'd like to see some uh, pedestrian walkways or sidewalks being cleared a little bit. I've noticed, for example, and I know it's very difficult to, uh, but in front of the Family Dollar, there's no sidewalk sometimes there. Uh, where the bus stops, it's just a pile of slag and it would be great if we could somehow get that factored into their removal program as well. Uh, but then also, uh, there's been concerns about just uh, sidewalks in town where people can no longer walk. And, and they're storing, they're storing that snow on the sidewalks, making it more of a uh, I, I mean, I, I'm the messenger. I get the fact that they're doing a great job with the, with their, with the removal and the, and the the plowing portion of it in the allocated time they can through the state and through uh, the Department of Transportation. Uh, and also happy to hear that a seventh is, is being hopefully hired here in the next week or two, considering we're getting more snow, uh, which will then increase our bandwidth for snow removal. I'll leave it there because I know uh, council member Hill or Green or someone else may have heard as well, and so I'd like to hear if anybody else has heard anything similarly uh, than I have and maybe discuss. Um, I, I know they had a plan to do every other block or, you know, half a block, and I, I want to see if they're still trying to shut that down, but I, I want to hear, but I'm the only one that's hearing from constituents about the snow removal program.
Anybody else have anything?
Dana's got her hand up.
Oh, I see Dana, yes.
Yeah, I, well, I, I also have been hearing um, from constituents. I think, you know, Max and I uh, have the same ward, which is really large. Um, and I agree with you, Mayor. I think that the streets, the driving area of the streets has been really wonderful and I've been very grateful to have that area cleared. I think where I'm hearing a lot of concern is over the sides of the streets where um, where people park and removal of the snow in those areas. Um, and that is partially the streets, you know, when they clear it up, there are sometimes snow storage piles that, like Max said, will spill over onto the sidewalks. But also, of course, our own local individuals who have plows on the front of vehicles who are trying to clear their own driveways or, or spaces and not really having a place to put snow except for, you know, somewhere on the side of the street, which makes it really difficult. And so I'm wondering, I, I'm just wondering if part of our snow removal plan discussion, not tonight, but at some point, can involve working with people who plow their own side of the street or driveways and say, if you put your snow here, you know, in this pile, the street department will pick it up on X day. Um, because I know that there is some, there's a focus to keep areas open for the businesses and some of the businesses will have their um, you know, their areas plowed by the street department. And I'm just wondering if we can work with our local citizen plowers to both encourage them to put snow in a predictable place that doesn't block the corners. Um, but that also can be picked up at some point on a schedule. Just an idea.
Uh, I think, I think it's a good idea. We, we uh, about three years ago, we had a meeting, we pulled all the contractors in town together with the street department to discuss that. It, it's a bit of a Wild West out there. A lot of times they're doing their work when, when we're not around. Um, and I've said before, like, we never pu, we never pile snow in the corners. But yet if you, especially on, on the west side, that's what happens is snow gets piled in the corner. So uh, it, it's very difficult to um, corral that issue. I, I don't know of a great way to do it. I, I, that's not a very good answer, but we've tried. Uh, the other thing is, we actually do have some understanding with some, with some uh, homeowners that if they'll put the snow in a certain place, then we'll try and come and get it. So uh, we do some of that, although I think it's limited in terms of just relationships on the street.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that could be a new kind of, you know, city to resident discussion of uh, you know, expand that program from just some individual homeowners to, hey, you know, third and fourth blocks of West Third, if you put your snow where these Xs are, we'll come pick them up like on a Tuesday or something like that. Yeah, Max, another tool in the toolbox. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Still in housekeeping or related to snow?
Well, I wanted to see if anybody else had anything on snow.
Okay.
I, I don't have it. Mayor, this is uh, council member Hill.
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything from my constituents on the snow removal. Um, I have had a chance to witness the blower in action on Harrison. And that, that's actually pretty impressive. Seems like a uh, pretty efficient with that, with that piece of equipment already. They were, they were removing snow. I think it takes somewhere between fifteen and twenty minutes for one per, per block. So that's, that seemed pretty uh, pretty efficient to me and uh, looked like everything was working good on that. Other than that, I don't, I don't really have much from my constituents and just from my personal observance. Uh, I think there is some um, stuff's being made to improve removal part of uh, snow maintenance, so just got to keep moving in the right direction on that.
All right, thank you.
I do, I do have um.
All right, uh, thank you very much. Cisco, you had a housekeeping matter?
A few things, and please let me know if they'll be addressed later in the meeting. Um, any updates on the administrator?
Good question. Uh, we actually, on the eighteenth, will have the first reading of that ordinance uh, for city administrator.
Okay.
Uh, she's going to be here on the, on the eighteenth at our meeting on the eighteenth. She officially starts on February the fourteenth.
Okay, so accept, accepted the position and?
Yes.
Wow, hooray. Cool.
In fact, she's gonna be here during that week of the eighteenth, and so I invited her to come to city council meeting. She, she said she would love to do that.
Super. Well, nice work. Um, how about Ditto Housing Director?
An RFP went out uh, yesterday uh, for the county for housing work. So that was, that was actually on my list.
Was it?
Good work. Uh, yeah, the, the RFP is out for the housing director. Uh, they're going to go into, into the, you know, the hiring protocol.
Okay.
For that, that individual.
Okay. Somewhat related. Um, I'm gonna put this out there. If anyone has other ideas or, or uh, complimentary ideas, please let me know. Um, I perceive that in the rail yard project, we did not have all the access to all the tools we needed to make sure that was um, a development that included certain affordable housing type options. Uh, I think we're thankful that the developer was gracious in, in phase one and two about contributing some things. Um, given that, I think for future PUDs, we would want some of those tools, uh, like zone, certain zoning things. I'm wondering if we would like to consider some kind of moratorium on them until our housing director has um, some traction and some ideas on what we want to do. And I don't know if that's a moratorium on PUDs or perhaps there's, perhaps something else could meet that goal. Or, or maybe it's a non-issue and I am open to that as well.
Well, I would say this, we, we've uh, we have granted the PUDs for both uh, phase one and phase two.
Right.
Uh, phase three is gonna be fading west and their sole objective is to do affordable and attainable and workforce housing.
Uh-huh.
And I don't know what other projects in the city would fall into that category where a moratorium would be meaningful.
Okay, so if another project like, like that came up, the timeline would be long enough that we would, could have any tools in place? Cause I'm envisioning, what about the next one? What's the next development gonna be?
For the city, I'm not sure there will ever be a next one.
Because of finite land?
We don't have land.
Okay, so there's.
For a large development.
That was true for the rail yard as well, but we annexed that, right?
We did annex that.
So theoretically, that type of thing could arise?
It, it's possible. I would, I would call it unlikely, but possible. And
Okay.
The city and county would have to agree that that's in everybody's best interest.
Okay.
For that to happen.
And would that be a pretty lengthy timeline for all that to happen?
Actually, it kind of is. Annexation took us, you know, three, four months.
Okay.
Uh, it was actually fairly complicated. Uh, in terms of the sorts of things you're talking about, if you're talking about inclusionary zoning, uh, which the county has rejected already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's never made much sense to us, uh, because we were pretty far down the road uh, in terms of, of development. Um, we would have been putting it in place after the fact. Um, I don't know if that's a good tool or not.
Well, I don't either. And that's why I would want to make sure that we have some guidance from the housing director and the coalition um, before we're making future decisions like that. And, and um, I guess in it, to zoom out a little, I'm just wondering, are there other realms, not just PUD that we would want to slow down until we have uh, more guidance from a housing director? uh, more guidance from a housing director?
I don't know. Anybody have any ideas on that? It doesn't seem clear to me.
Like we did with the, with the formula businesses, we slowed that down so we could make a thoughtful decision. And I'm wondering if there's anything we want to do in the housing front like that.
Um.
Anybody have a thought?
I would just like to make a comment. I'm not sure that the county rejected inclusionary zoning. They simply have not really brought it up yet. They haven't voted on it or anything, so I can't, I don't think it's fair to say that they rejected it.
No, I, I was there. Max, they literally voted on it.
And as far as, uh, doing it for the city, I'm not sure that, as the mayor said, that there's anything upcoming that we would not control and determine that, the fate of that. But if you're worried that, um, fading west would reneg on their intent, that might be a consideration, I guess.
I am not worried about that. I am, I'm kind of thinking beyond the rail yard. I'm not thinking about any of the phases of the rail yard at the moment. I'm thinking about what's the next thing out beyond the rail yard. And getting our ducks in a row before that happens. But maybe we have enough time, given the timeline that that would take.
I think if, if we were going into an annexation possibility, then at that time, we could consider that that's almost simultaneously that we want time to, to get, uh, you know, to have a conversation about what tools we wanted placed, uh, to assure affordable housing. But that's all I can think of. Max, sorry, go ahead.
No worries. Uh, no, I, I think, uh, that Councilmember Tharp brings up a, a good point about this, this topic. And then also, I'm wondering, here we are on the Fourth of January. Are there, have we as a council even bringing it back out a little bit farther? Do I decided what, instead of being reactionary, uh, how, what proactive measures are we looking to take this year as a council with a new city administrator and, and everything like that? And I do feel that this type of conversation, uh, we have to daylight other important items that were committed to making some positive steps down the road to us, you know, resolution. And of course, leaving plenty of room for what comes in our way because I'll tell you what, a lot of walk-in business is gonna take our time, right? But I, I just wanna say that I would like to further this discussion because I feel that it, it warrants more discussion. And, and perhaps doing that in a work session where we're actually identifying when we get our new council member, uh, our new, our new city administrator and truly sit down and say, what is the shape of our city now that we have these people in place? What are, what are we gonna work towards? And I think we do it every year. So this, this is just a reminder that we gotta get that on the calendar again.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
We will be talking later about work session, possible work session dates and, and subjects. Uh, and that would be one to probably have, uh, once the administrator is in place, maybe March.
Yeah, I like that idea. That's all from me, thank you.
Anybody else have any housekeeping matters? Max?
I apologize, Mayor. I just wanna go one go back, uh, with the new administrator coming in on the eighteenth. And just, uh, circling the, circling back on the snow removal program. Is there a way that the city street department can have a, uh, prepare some sort of report out for us to understand what they've been doing from, you know, we'll say from the first of the year to the eighteenth, what blocks they've been concentrating on? And so the city administrator and ourselves have a bigger picture of, of what that means uh, as, as an actual presentation, please?
I'll be glad to get that together.
Thank you.
Available be department reports also, so timing should be good.
I have, uh, one, I have one item to bring up, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, COVID testing in the community, is there any available?
Uh, yeah, they've started again, uh, at the hospital. Uh, they were down for a few days, they're back up again. I just read something today, but I don't remember what the timeframe was or.
Hey, cause I, I heard today that the testing was shut down for another week. Is that not true? Maybe this is a question for Dana.
I haven't seen that yet.
I had heard the same thing, Tim, and I think it's online as well.
Okay. What was the reason?
Councilmember Hill, you're correct. They are shut down until the tenth. Any existing appointments will be honored, including vaccinations. But until the tenth, they're not doing any more drive-through anything. And then after the tenth, it will be by appointment only.
Is that a capacity issue or do we know?
It's mostly a staffing issue, although, um, there's some question marks about how many tests are just generally available, but it's primarily a staffing issue.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. At this time, we would ask if anybody in the public would like to make comments, uh, not on the agenda. If you'd like to, please come up, uh, give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hi, Ting.
Um, good evening. Um, I think some of the council members have been copy on the email chain between, happening between us and Sarah Much. Uh, I just wanted to provide a little bit background about what's happening. Um, since last year about October time, uh, one of the community members brought that to our attention that Commissioner Sarah Much are unhappy with our ETV guiding business. I have them repetitively trying to reach out to the commissioner, telling her everything we've been doing for the community, everything we've been investing in this community and the staff and high paying jobs that we've created. Um, instead, Commissioner Sarah Much told us untrue, uh, information about one, snow cap is not allowed on east side county roads. Two, guiding is not allowed on the east side county roads. Uh, after that, we consulted with three different lawyers about this matter and we're told that we're operating a hundred percent legally. So I've been trying to reach out to Commissioner Sarah Much to get clarification about why did she tell us information that's not true and expect us to make investment decisions based on the untrue information? Um, unfortunately, obviously, I did not get any information, uh, of any feedback from her. I ran into her finally yesterday at courthouse. Again, I ran into her, not a scheduled meeting after three full months. Um, and I tried to tell her how everything we've been doing for the community, how devastating it would be for our business, for our staffing. It would be like if she's considering taking guiding away from us. She told us, hey, I think that is a bad investment decision and that is not my problem. That is extremely frustrating on our side, considering it is not a bad investment decision, if you ask me. Our business grossed over a hundred and ten thousand dollars in December in one month. We brought over a thousand people, uh, into Lake County, um, just in December from preparation there. Uh, it is not a bad investment decision, but it is truly terrifying knowing that she's trying to have conversation with other members in this community discussing how to quote, address our business while we are not even being provided with true honest information and even be remotely close to being involved in this conversation. So I'm asking the council members who are involved in discussions like this to consider what she's trying to do and what might happen if the guiding services are taken away from us and to taken away from our staff. Um, and I would really, really appreciate any council member who help us to advocate our business.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Uh, I was not on the agenda. Okay, Seena?
Can I ask a question about that one?
Uh, you can.
Any council members who are involved in that conversation, is there discussion to involve business owners in that planning?
Max, what note?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not privy to what they're thinking about, but I would only hope and encourage the fact that business owners are, are gonna be part of that conversation. I don't, one, one question I do have, and, and I noticed it in on, uh, and I know it's not Ting's business, but on the, uh, the Elk Mountain Adventures, uh, they still have wheeled vehicles, uh, and I don't see the track vehicle. So they're actually using a surface, a groomed surface for wheeled vehicles, I believe, on the east side. And that is a, a a new way of using the east side in the winter. And so that's, I think, a concern for people, but that's, that's, uh, and it is legal and I do know that there could be some, some, uh, ability for counties to regulate the use of county roads, uh, through a house bill that's being deliberated upon it in Denver right now. So there could be more to it down the road than we know of. Uh, but yeah, I fully encourage participation. I mean, this is a solution that everybody has to come up with.
Thank you, Max. Any other city council members? Have thoughts on this? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna dive into the agenda. First, we have the approval of the minutes from December the seventh, twenty twenty-one. Anybody have any issues? Here and done on the entertaining motion, please.
Now in moves to approve the, uh, regular council meeting minutes from Tuesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Loretson, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
This Dana Green abstained because I was abstaining.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the, uh, special meeting of Tuesday, December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. I didn't want to comment. That was a terrific work session. It went in directions I did not expect and turned out very well. Here and done on the entertaining motion, please.
Art moves to approve the minutes from the special council meeting of Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Down, seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Uh, this is Dana Green, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, abstaining, wasn't there.
All right, next up, we have a, a mural approval for Full Circle of Lake County. Anybody have any thoughts on this mural? Oh, Stephanie, oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie is on the, see, terrible.
No worries, I was hiding. Um, hi, hi, council members and mayor. Um, I, I submitted the the written, uh, sort of statement of the mural plan. It's, it's a project that we, um, engaged our, our youth participants in over the last few months to design a mural that, um, reflects things that, that the youth of Full Circle care about. Um, both about Full Circle and the community, um, and it, it's sort of an effort to, to make our new building on, on East Seventh Street feel more inclusive and a sort of welcoming space that, that youth see themselves as a part of. Sort of creating some ownership for them. Um, it, it's an eight by eight foot mural with some cut out wood dots, basically, um, that the plan is to affix to the building. It's, it's really beautiful. I, I put a digital image in the application. Um, it turned out really, really neat and, and just reflects so many different, um, parts of, of what matters to the youth of Full Circle. And, um, we're really excited about the project. We were able to work with Mackenzie Stock, a local artist. And she worked really closely with youth to make sure that their voice was, was driving the entire design. Um, so I appreciate you, you reviewing it. Um, and I'm, I hope to be able to add some, some new cultural art to, um, public space in Lake County.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, any input from staff? Okay, thank you. Any, any comments or thoughts from city council?
It looks beautiful.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm excited to, I'm excited to see that space come alive even more than it already has and, uh, really to, uh, see Full Circle, um, really flourish there.
I think the bright colors will really brighten that up. Otherwise, it's kind of drab. So I think the color choices are, are very nice.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, in which case I would entertain a motion, please.
Loretta moves to approve the seven foot by seven foot Full Circle of Lightville Incorporated mural to be installed via wood panel onto the most western facing wall at one fifteen East Seventh Street facing the alley.
You have a second?
Bill's second.
That was Bill's second. Roll call, please.
Who, one, sorry, one thing. Um, Stephanie said eight by eight feet. I see seven by seven feet, which.
I'm, yeah, I misspoke. I really apologize for that. It is seven by seven feet.
Okay, I just didn't want it to, uh, get anybody later on or anything. Yep. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Gowing.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Councilmember for GNC.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you all so much. Come, come by our building and check it out. The inside too. You're all welcome.
Uh, next up, we have a conditional use permit for the extension request. This is for the communications tower. I think, uh, for those of you who aren't aware, this has been in process for a few years. It's gotten, uh, delayed for a couple of reasons. Not the least of which is COVID, which is, which is stated in here. You know, but also I think that, that the state of the grant entity through, through this, the county's some curveballs in the middle of all of it. But, uh, nonetheless, they still intend to build this tower. Uh, it's going to be on city land. And we've already approved the CUP once. They're actually asking for an extension in order to, to give them time to complete the project. Any questions or concerns on that?
Do we have some kind of estimate then that should take place or will take place or?
I don't know that we do. Uh, you know, I, I know that they, they now intend to go forward. They have all the pieces in place.
And the funding is there?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding. Uh, one of the problems with the funding was they originally, you know, granted the funding, but it turned out the funding didn't include the building where all the equipment has to be. And it, no, you know, they, no one ever mentioned that. So that's, that's been one of those things that's, uh, a little bit problematic as they've gone. been a little bit problematic as they've gone forward, but they're in a position in this tower according to, to, uh, Office of Emergency Management, like a huge difference in our ability to communicate, especially with the southern end of the county where we have a lot of dead zones in communication there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
Art moves to approve an extension for the previously approved conditional use permit for Lake County Emergency Management Services at the property of seven hundred East Tenth Street for twenty-four. Did we discuss time?
We, we did. Normally these are good for two years. Extension could be for one year, you know. I don't see any reason not to make it two years. We have plenty of time to, to get it completed.
For twenty-four months.
For Gency, seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Council member for Gency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Loretson.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes. Thank you. Hope they get it up. Next up, we have, uh, one application for city treasurer, Allison Hoogland. Uh, Allison, would you like to come up and speak to city council?
You know, finding out that no one had run for this office, um, I wasn't even, I'm going to be honest, aware of that, but knowing that it's an important step in the process of the finances for, um, Lake, um, not Lake County, but for the city, is to have someone really go over and look and make sure that everything is on the other end up. It's important to me, you know, as someone who's worked in banking and always, we always had backups. We always had someone double checking. We always had. Um, so, so I know that that's an important step and I'm interested not only because I have invested my life in, in the city of Leadville and Lake County with kids in my home and, um, my job here, but also just furthering my own endeavors, um, in the area of, say, business and planning and it just seems like a really, really great step to multiply for me and to help out the city of Leadville.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions for Allison? I, I have one. I mean, I, I think that you've been working with Donna, if I'm not mistaken, and that you're, you're aware of the, of the job description.
Yes.
That we have for the city treasurer. Okay, just want to make sure. Anybody else? Uh, then I would entertain a motion, please. This would be a motion to appoint Allison as, as city treasurer.
Gowing moves to appoint Allison Hoogland as the city of Leadville's treasurer.
Art seconds.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Council member for Gency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Loretson.
Yes.
Allison, thank you so much for stepping up.
Thanks, Allison. Thanks for doing it.
Are we going to need to do a swearing in of Allison on the evening?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have some resolutions and ordinances. Uh, first is resolution number one, series of twenty twenty-two resolution designated the official public notice location. We do this every year, uh, according to the state, when we're done, we'll send this on to, uh, to DOLA. Uh, designated those, those, uh, those places, uh, that we have declared as, as our, uh, places of notification. I would say that I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if we have the website as a notification place previous to this, have we?
No.
I didn't think so.
It's only been the front door.
Okay, so now it gives us the option of, or both, of doing, uh, website and front door. We still use the, the newspaper, local newspaper for notifications that require that publication. Any thoughts or questions on this?
You know, per, uh, some community feedback, um, from Mr. Cypher, for example, just pointing out that our website was a little, uh, less than updated. Are we confident that we can maintain the website to these standards?
Good question.
Yeah, so currently we do have our link published. I did address his concerns. I went through to those pages that I normally don't look at.
Okay.
And, but I normally work on the city council pages and we post the minutes, we post the agendas. We have the link for the meeting recording from there, but it's on different pages. So I had to update the other pages. So I believe going forward, I'm writing procedures for this position, and that is one of the procedures for getting ready for council.
That's super.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. And I, I do love the idea as long as we, we, um, can make it work with fidelity.
I, I would like for us to do both consistently unless we, there's some reason we can't. Uh, I'd like for it to be on the front door, however the website vote.
That is my intention going forward.
Any other thoughts or concerns? Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
Art moves to adopt resolution number one, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution designating the official public notice location and the official newspaper of general circulation for the city of Leadville, Colorado.
Loretson, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Loretson.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Council member for Gency.
Yes.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Allison. Uh, next up, we have resolution number two, series of twenty twenty-two, resolution for a supplemental budget for unanticipated revenues and appropriating additional sums of money, uh, to defray unanticipated expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for.
Mayor, this needs to be a public hearing.
Thank you for the reminder. At this time, it is six forty-seven, and I open a public hearing on the supplemental budget resolution. Mr. Schneider.
Um, so supplemental budget for two thousand twenty-one, the general fund operational, basically, um, it's uh, mostly consisted of a American Rescue Plan. I was thinking that, you know, just in case we did spend the rest of the money that we got, and I had to account those, those expenditures. Um, as you can see, the street is also a little bit higher, but we did file it forward outright in two thousand twenty-one. So we had to account for those expenditures. And then the animal shelter, you know, we, we did have the floor you put in, which was about ten thousand dollars. Um, we bought some of those cat panels for three thousand dollars, so those are mostly what's for the animal shelter. High Country Developers, um, last year, Billy told me, Yavira told me that we should be actually doing supplemental budgets for them as well. Um, and it is really expenditures out, revenue in, you know, so it's, it's just kind of a wash. So those are equal. Um, fire department really consisted of, um, just because of a staffing issue, they let's, um, they were really over on their overtime, just because of the different staffing issues. And then, of course, they had some vehicle breakdowns that they had to take care of there. And then, of course, we always have a wildfire expenditures that are never budgeted, so we had to account for those. And then I also did, um, to account for the expenditures, I also did a supplement on revenue, which doesn't matter as far as the rules concerned, but I had to just show that, yes, we did bring in wildland fire revenue to offset it, the expenditures, which still does not matter, but anyway, those are kind of those who use the budget, the supplemental budget. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Schneider? We could ask her after we've opened the public hearing, uh, the actual public comment portion. Okay, uh, at this time, uh, it's six forty-nine. I would like to open the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to speak, please come up and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes, and that would be whether you are in favor of, or in opposition to the supplemental budget, or if you simply have comments on it. See, uh, I would entertain a motion to close the public, uh, input portion of the public hearing.
Gowing moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Art seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, uh, if we have any questions for staff about the supplemental budget, let's please ask them now.
Donna, I have a question. Um, could you just give me one oh one, like, why do we need to do this? Just for my own learning mostly, but.
Okay, so this is for two thousand twenty-one. So when we did this budget for two thousand twenty-one last year,
Uh-huh.
and we filed that with DOLA, anytime we go over the expenditures or suspect we're going to go over in the expenditures, we've got to do a supplemental budget to account for those, um, origins and follow that with DOLA. We can never be, um, over a bu- a budget filed with DOLA. So, you know, if we file a budget with DOLA, we, we have to be under that.
Okay. Okay, so we're, that's what we're doing here.
Also, it's important to note, DOLA doesn't care about revenue. They only care about expense. You, the supplemental budget is based entirely on expense. Doesn't matter how much revenue you had to offset that expense.
Are there, um, repercussions from DOLA in any way, or do they just want to stay informed?
Honestly, I don't know. We've never done it, so I don't know.
We do a supplemental budget every single year. We've never, you know, I think it's all perfunctory in, in their mind. They just want reporting on what we're doing. Now, the reporting, for example, the city hall operating expenses, which was the, you know, a, a projected possibility of four hundred thousand dollars, which isn't true, but still you have to protect yourself on the, on the off chance that, for instance, that those ARP funds would have all been spent in twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the background.
Um, any other questions? Max, I'm sorry, do you have a question, Max?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, so we've already expended this, these dollar amounts in twenty twenty-one. I mean, and we've gone over by a half million dollars over budget. Is that what I'm reading and hearing?
That's, that's not correct, but
Okay.
It's what has to be reported to DOLA to protect us from having gone over, especially in the case of the ARP funds, which was three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
So did we get revenue after we submitted the budget to DOLA, then we got additional revenue and did additional spending? Okay, so. Okay, so that's why it's, it's news to DOLA, but our ba- our budget's still balanced. Okay, gotcha.
Yes. Well, in the case of the, the fire, the wildfire expenses, again, we can't budget those because we never know what's going to happen. We know that the revenue more than offsets it. In fact, it's a, it's a positive for us.
Right.
And that goes into the fire fund balance for, for future, uh, capital equipment. Uh, but still, we, we spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It wasn't budgeted, so we have to report that as an overage.
Okay, I see. Yeah, interesting.
Any other thoughts? Uh, then I would entertain a motion, uh, on resolution number two, series of twenty twenty-two.
Green moves to approve resolution two, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution for a supplemental budget for unanticipated revenues and appropriating additional sums of money to defray unanticipated expenditures in excess of amounts budgeted for the general fund, the High Country Developers Fund, and the Fire Operations Fund of the city of Leadville, Colorado.
Right here, a second.
Art second.
Art beat you to it. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Council member Loretson.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Council member for Gency.
Yes.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, it is six fifty-six, and we close the public hearing, uh, on the supplemental budget resolution. Thank you. Next, we have resolution number thirty-five, series of twenty twenty-one, resolution certifying and levying the bill, the bill levy of the city of Leadville for twenty twenty-one to defray the cost of government, uh, for the city of Leadville and for the twenty twenty-two budget year. Uh, and this is an amended resolution, and the reason it is, is we received, uh, kind of a late breaking, uh, change in just the amounts. The bill levy, the bills didn't change, and we've reported the bills to the county and, and that's satisfactory. Uh, but they did ask for us for, uh, to do an amended resolution. Uh, the amounts changed by about twelve hundred dollars in terms of total assessed value, uh, for the city of Leadville. And that's why we're doing, we're going through this exercise. Any questions or concerns about that? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Council member for Gency moves to adopt the amended resolution number thirty-five, series of twenty twenty-one, a resolution certifying and levying the mill levy of the city of Leadville for twenty twenty-one to defray the cost of government for the city of Leadville for the budget, the twenty twenty-two budget year, which amended resolution shall supersede and replace the original resolution number thirty-five, series of twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second, please?
Bill seconds.
Thank you. Any other conversation, discussion? I'm sorry, I'm not hitting on all cylinders tonight. Roll call, please.
Council member Loretson.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Council member for Gency.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we're looking at the public meetings planner. Uh, and one of the things we were going to discuss is the possibility of, of looking at some dates, uh, for work sessions and, and possible subjects of those work sessions. I can give you a couple that I know are coming up, one is, I think we need to look at the requests from the Historic Preservation Commission. In 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 terms of possible change. To, I don't know if that's to code or not, nonetheless, to to make the changes that they've requested. Another one is the for the Housing Coalition. The Policy Advisory Team has made some suggestions on changes to code that they would like to see. Pretending to density and some other subjects to to help with affordable housing issues. I think we need to discuss both those things in 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 no particular order and but those are those are changes. To code that will need to be going down the road, maybe in the next six months.
Also, Mayor, we need to talk about our private parking sign program that expired last month. And the HPC demolition code about the six months.
Right.
That stuff, it it all seems to kind of factor into what. Councilmember for Gency was saying about some kind of strategic prioritization. And I wonder if that should be our our first. Work session would be to sort some of those priorities out.
We could, we could do that, we've we've kind of sorted those out with Christiana.
Okay.
In terms of giving her a list of things that we that we have talked about and she's working down that list.
Okay.
But I mean, I'd be happy to have that conversation and and see whatever he thinks about all the different, you know. Attacks we've given to our city attorney and maybe in what order we feel like. It's it's important to tackle those, because there's there's a pretty long list. Any thoughts, City Council? I guess first question is, do we want to have a work session next Tuesday, and if so, what topic would we like to tackle?
I will not be able to attend next Tuesday.
Anybody else, do we wanna, we wanna forego this until February?
What what topic, what topic do you not wanna talk about, Cisco?
That's good.
HPC.
He doesn't wanna talk about HPC.
Um, I would like to suggest that we forego next week because we do have the Laura meeting and.
Yeah, we do.
Let's not overwhelm everybody again this year, if we don't have to, and perhaps do it on the. Twenty fifth.
I like that, partially because I'd be able to attend, but also the administrator would have started on the eighteenth and.
No, she's not starting on the eighteenth, she started on February fourteenth.
Oh.
She'll be here in attendance on the eighteenth.
Gotcha.
But we will have a new council member who won't be sworn in until the eighteenth, so. Be nice to have that additional person as well.
Good point.
So would you like to schedule a work session on the twenty fifth? And if so, what topic or topics would we like to tackle?
Mayor, this council member Hill.
Yes, sir.
I think maybe we should address the parking first.
Okay.
Since that is completely going away by April thirtieth, I believe.
Yes. I agree, I think that's a, that's a, that's a hot topic for us right now, thank you, is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Mayor, this is council member permission for Gency.
Go ahead.
So on the twenty fifth, is that work session just gonna primarily be on parking? Or are we going to, I mean, is there a way we can get the new city administrator to come up for a work session? I'd really like to get them engaged sooner than later, if it is possible in in her schedule. I I just think that without having the person that's gonna be driving our our ship. There and at least hear some of our suggestions, it may not bear as much fruit in the future if we're having those types of conversations.
I would say this, you know, she still has has a full-time job, so I appreciate the fact that she's gonna be up here the week of the eighteen. I I could invite her to come up on the twenty fifth to join the work session, or maybe she could join us via Zoom. And maybe that would be acceptable, what do you think? Okay, I will do that, thank you. All right, anything else on the the events calendar?
Um, Mayor, this Tracy. So we do have a Laura meeting next week and Sarah Dallas is no longer under contract to the city. So I just wanna make sure that it gets posted correctly so that we can go ahead with the meeting. And are we going to have a contract through the URA or the city for her to facilitate?
I was not under the impression she was no longer under contract.
Her contract expired December thirty first.
I didn't realize that, thank you. Yeah, Donna says she thought it was for a year.
I'd have, I'd appreciate if somebody could check, because I thought it was at the end of this month.
We'll double.
Or last month, okay.
Double check on that right away, thank you.
Okay.
My, it's my assumption Sarah is still under contract, but but maybe we should make sure that that we're all in agreement on that. And if we have to to for formalize a new contract, then we can do that. Anything else? Okay, thank you. We have Mayor's Report, we don't have much to report, Council Reports. Anything going on around town?
I have a big update. My six-year-old daughter and I are doing some citizen science and we are observing State Street Park. And collecting data on usage, both human and beyond in the animal kingdom. So I hope we'll have a a nice report for you soon, or, you know, we wanna carry it through the seasons, so. You know, maybe in the fall, and I can guarantee this, it will be colorful.
Well, as you and I have discussed, I I intend to have State Street Park. Maintained as a park this next summer. To the best of our ability, so we have somebody actually doing.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Anybody else? Well, Happy New Year, everybody, thanks for being here, off to a roaring start. It is seven oh seven, the City Council is adjourned.
Wow.